Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Monday, July 1st, 2024 at 6:30 PM. We're in City Hall of Greenfield in the second floor meeting room. Chairman's statement. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board, David Singer. This meeting is being recorded. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Anybody else here? You're from the Greenfield quarter? In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 20G, quote, "No person shall address a meeting of the public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, to request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If, after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting." End of quote. Okay. Mr. Clerk, can you please read what's on the first public hearing for tonight?
Yes, this is a continuation of an appeal from May 9th, 2024, application of Marion Griswold for property located at 30 Haywood Street, Assessor's Tax Map 91, Block 74, which is located in urban residential RA zoning district, for appeal of the letter from Mark Snow, inspector of building state in March 19, 2024, relative to aromatic filters located at 38 Haywood Street.
Thank you. Okay.
The lawyer saying waiting for, or feeding is still safe. Now that's there. Is there something I need to communicate?
Everything here looks good. Is there somebody who's online who can just speak to us to confirm that you guys are hearing us?
I can hear you.
All right, thank you.
Maybe ask him to try again. Sometimes that happens, or, yeah. Right, I'll. But we could talk among ourselves. What I was thinking of doing was, I continued the hearing, so if there are new people that want to speak tonight, I'll let some new voices be heard, and I'll give the applicant and aromatic a chance to speak, and then we'll close the hearing and then we'll deliver it. Everybody set with that? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and sitting on the panel tonight are David Mark, Debbie Jones, Jim Nguyen, Peter Williams, and David Singer.
Chair, would you be able to have a conference call with your phone with your attorney?
Please.
Was he there?
See.
It's like he was connected. Yeah, everyone came up. All the people, iPhone 3 and D-Sfree came up, both saying they're connected to the audio now.
Getting the zoning board, the people that are referring, waiting for the host to start, like sending a picture. Do you want me to just FaceTime?
He chances using my own link.
If he goes to city of, if he goes to city of Greenfield, calendar, and then looks up July 1st, he should be able to press that soon. I suspect everyone here did that.
Probably, like, city of Greenfield.
Calendar.
Calendar.
July 1st. The other thing you could do is, you could call her and.
Yeah. Just do that, so it'll be.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. I'm going to call you and put you on speaker.
He has to raise his hand if he wants to speak. There we go. Good. Okay.
All right.
Welcome, Attorney Morris. Okay, so are there people here tonight that did not speak at the prior meeting that want to speak about the appeal?
I think I would like to say a few things.
Why don't you come up here, sit down, please? Tell us your name and your address.
So my name is Keith Kozier, at 4 North Kellogg Road, Haydenville, Massachusetts.
Oh, Haydenville, okay.
Yeah. So, one thing I want to speak upon is the effect that it will have if this business is forced to, in the worst-case scenario, close or move or whatever. So I worked, I've been in the candle industry for 18 years, since I was 18, not 18 years. You're gonna have to excuse me because I'm nervous, and if I talk or stumble, not a great speaker.
Take your time.
So for, since I was 18 years old, I've been working the candle industry for 31 years. I worked at Yankee Candle. They decided to eliminate my position. Now, this is my career, and there's not a lot of businesses around here that, that offer this. I was able to find another job working aromatic fillers, and if I have to find another job, basically, you're starting over. I'm not gonna find another job in my career. So therefore, I'm starting over at, you know, a lower pay, and it's gonna affect a lot of things. When I lost my job at Yankee, I had just paid my first mortgage payment, one month. So now here I am, now I'm feeling like I need to defend my business again here, because, you know, the second thing is, 31 years at Yankee, you know, I worked in the lab for 12 of that. Now, as far as safety goes, like, and nothing is allowed in the building, like vendors know not to send things to candle companies that are toxic, like, you know, nothing over Level 2, nothing else comes in the building. So, like, as far as that goes, you know, if I have any health issues after 35 years in this industry, it's because I love bacon and my lack of exercise, nothing to do with candles. So, I mean, I just want to say, I mean, everyone here has things in their cabinets that are more toxic than anything that we even allow in our building. Like, you can go in your garage and find things that are more toxic than anything that's allowed in our, so.
Thank you.
All right. Other than that?
That's it. Thank you. So just to make it clear to everyone, what we're doing here, we are not deciding to shut down any business. We are deciding whether or not aromatic fillers needs to apply for a special permit to have their business run in that site. This is not about shutting anybody down. That's the whole issue before us on appeals, whether or not they're allowed to be there under the umbrella of the other special permit, or whether they need to come for another special permit. And you all know how the zoning board of appeals is, I hope, in terms of special permit applications. We're very welcoming, and we listen to everybody, and we're trying to balance the needs of everybody. So this is not at least going after anybody. This is just, we have to decide whether, what the rules are and how they should be followed. So I hope that's clear to everybody, even when you're making your comments, this is not a special permit hearing. It's about whether or not they need to apply for a special permit. Okay, anybody else that hasn't spoken wish to speak? Okay, oh, yes.
I'd like to ask permission to speak, even though I spoke last time in response to some things that were said.
Said.
At the last.
Yes, before you do this, anybody else that spoke last time also want to speak? Because if one person speaks, well, you're an applicant.
Yeah.
You can add a couple of hands. Okay, can you make it a minute or two? All right, please.
I sent this, yep, Mary Chickman.
Oh, yes, you did send this.
Davis Street, and I sent a letter late this afternoon, and I apologize, you probably all didn't get it. So that's why I wanted to read this. Says, just to follow up on the May 16th meeting, during the meeting, aromatic fillers owner Todd Green made assertions about the potential cost of installing equipment that would mitigate the toxic odors emanating from his manufacturing facility. He stated that Yankee Candle installed mitigation equipment that costs millions of dollars, and he further stated that he cannot afford to install such equipment, and that he has done what he could do to address odors negatively impacting the surrounding residential neighborhood and the people living there. So, I wrote this note because I'm urging the members of the board, zoning board of appeals, to seek actual facts related to the cost of odor mitigation equipment for aromatic fillers. So Yankee Candle has a facility that's approximately 300,000 square feet and makes about 200 million candles a year, or about 550 candles per day. Aromatic fillers, on the other hand, makes, I'm sorry, 550,000 candles a day, and aromatic fillers makes 3,000 candles a day, that's what Mr. Green said at the last meeting. That's less than 1% of what Yankee Candle is making. So it would follow, in my line of thinking, that any equipment installed to stop the odors from escaping aromatic fillers would cost a very small fraction of the millions of dollars Mr. Green says Yankee Candle paid for odor mitigation. And I will just close to say that I ask that the zoning board of appeals requires Mr. Green to install all necessary equipment to stop the escape of toxic odors. Aromatic fillers should not be allowed to continue to have such a detrimental impact on the surrounding residential neighborhood and the people who call that neighborhood their home.
Thank you.
Send that out. Thank you very much.
You don't have to read this because she read it. Yes, sir. One minute, please.
Hi.
Name again.
My name's Scott Brennan. I live at 65 Hastings Street. That's a few houses up from Green's facility. What I wanted to just add, which that's part, to clarify some things at the last discussion, I don't expect all you zoning board members to have institutional knowledge of what went on at this property for 30 years, but, well, the years prior to, but I felt like the tone of the conversation, maybe some of you under the impression that this, this has been a manufacturing facility in the past, and I want to emphasize, it really never has been a true, any kind of bona fide manufacturing facility. In my 30 years on Hastings Street, we documented a lot of different companies that came through there, Sandries, Applied Dynamics, is the cable company. It was, it was, Ben Charlie, the most accurate way to describe it is a warehouse. It was a warehouse, and even when the warehouse was underutilized, they partitioned the warehouse into some very small things, and if there's any manufacturing, it was almost like a boutique thing, and manufacturer isn't right, the right word. Someone had mentioned, there was someone making shower, shower doors or something. Well, Mr. Bottomley looked into that, and that was basically a man who rented 1/6 of the warehouse space, which is a space that's about as big as his room. So there was no real manufacturing going on there. So I just wanted to be clear that Mr. Green has changed this property significantly. It is a big sea change from what it was to what it is now.
Do you have of your own knowledge, a memory of what Heat Fab did there?
Heat Fab is a good example. Heat Fab is just, like, powerful sounding name, like there's a forge going on. The Heat Fab was a wood stove manufacturer that imported unassembled wood stoves and assembled them on the property and shipped them out. They weren't a forge, they weren't smelting iron ore, there wasn't a smokestack. It would be actually, more actually called fold assembly than Heat Fab. So that was yet, that was one of those terms where I thought like, oh, Pete, that sounds like there was some manufacturing thing. So there's not, this isn't some, with this permit process, this isn't some, you know, passing of the baton from a manufacturing operation to another manufacturing. This is a radical change from what the property was used for and what it's used for today.
Good.
So I just want to clarify that. I won't take up all your time. There was a lot of debate, you know, I mentioned my rights in the Massachusetts Constitution for fresh air, you know, I kind of stand by that, but that's sort of like big picture stuff and maybe a little grandiose, but I stand by that, you know, that is default position of many of our neighbors. We are entitled to fresh air. It is in the Massachusetts Constitution, and there's, those rights can't be easily dismissed or traded away. It's as simple as that, and I'm not gonna argue with John Adams, you know, and he doesn't check his, his ideas at the door when we get to Greenfield. And the final thing I would say is just, if this permit process, as you, someone may see it, where you simply, one person gets a permit, they come to the neighbors, say, I'm maybe gonna make some tools, and then they get a special permit, and then it's handed off to the next guy, you're basically undermining your own board's authority to regulate and, and police these kind of things. You're essentially like surrendering your own authority and your own mission as a board. There needs to be some special in the special permit. It's not, one gets a permit, and it's like forever, you know, going to just get handed off to the next guy. That's not how this, you know, my understanding of how a special permit should work, and as I said, you, you folks volunteer your time, you obviously respect, you know, what you do and the importance of your decisions you make, and I wouldn't surrender them by saying, you know, and you have to look at it from the neighbor's perspective. Any new business that wants to operate in town, the neighbor's gonna be like, well, hey, you may, you might say you're making little handmade toys at this location, but 10 years from now, a marijuana producer might come in and say, there's a special permit, I'm in. So our neighbors will deny everything in all circumstances, and that goes for a business owner. He may, another business owner may want to just make something small-scale, very clean, but they'll be denied because the neighbors will fear that, hey, once a special permit's in place, anything goes, and that seems to be the thinking. So I just hope you, you know, take those couple things into account and make the right decisions. Thank you.
Anybody else on the public?
Hi, David. It's Stephanie Too Close. I just wanted to let you know that the City Hall's camera's not on. I don't have anything to say.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Stephanie.
All right, let me see if I can figure this out. Bear with me. That was not on Eric's instructions. It says start video, but it's Xed out, and I'm hitting start video, and it's not kicking in. Oh, there we go.
There it is. Yeah, hey, nice job.
I don't give it four facts.
Thank you again, Stephanie. Glenn, I recognize you, but you spoke last time. Can we please keep it brief? Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll keep it brief. I did submit a review article about the, some of the health hazards associated with fragrance products, and this certainly would include the candles that are being made at this facility, and there, the concern really is for vulnerable populations in the neighborhood, elderly, young children, pregnant women, persons with autism, and autoimmune diseases. And I think that we need to take those things into consideration when we're looking at that kind of widespread impact in a neighborhood, and we need to make sure that our health board has the right tools necessary to conduct inspections, follow up on complaints, monitor discharges, and make sure that there is not an impact from these kinds of facilities. And I don't really think that our city has the capacity at this point. It's something that I think needs to be looked at closely, and maybe that is part of the special permit process, where we would look at, look at this kind of thing. However, underlying all of this, I do want to say that I don't think we would even be here if the emissions have not been, like, happening for so many years with so many complaints. This could have been nipped in the bud, it could have been dealt with by the owner, but it hasn't been, and I think that's why we're all here, and it's a question of operating in good faith and being a good neighbor, and I don't think that we should have to bear the responsibility and the burden the community should, when we don't have cooperation from the business that is causing the problem. And I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ladies and gentlemen.
I did not speak.
Are you with Todd?
I'm a new person. I'm just.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I didn't mean it that way. I just meant, are you a team?
No, I'm not on the team. My name is Jennifer Hoffman. I live at 9 Homestead Avenue in Greenfield, and.
She's gonna be the health person?
I was the health director for the city of Greenfield from 2020 until last year. And the reason why I'm speaking is because I have personally visited aromatic fillers on two different occasions. Two different board chairs have visited aromatic fillers. The fire safety prevention officer, Daniel Smith, was there, and also the DEP. The reason why the DEP was there was because the city of Greenfield didn't have the funds and/or the equipment to test. So odor is a nuisance, and odor, just like other types of nuisances, are very person-dependent, and basically they go by time, how long an odor lasts, and the intensity. The DEP did not find anything multiple times. We, I have been there, both of my chairs at the time did not notice any odors that were insulting. I did not. I requested SDMS sheets after Mr. Ayers requested that we do that. There were no harmful chemicals or anything that would destroy the water. I have gone on multiple times, driving by with one of the inspectors, Nicole, her last name was Gladeback, now it's Ducharme, and drove by all different times. We never smelt anything except McDonald's. 100% of the time, McDonald's, no candles. We would take big, huge breaths, nothing. So what I'm trying to say is, there is a lot of documentation in the health department and Board of Health Minutes. This was discussed multiple times in the Board of Health Minutes, especially when the board finally, the previous chair, said we are not gonna be doing this anymore. The other chair, Nancy Bershov, said we're not doing this anymore. So there were two different chairs that said, no more. And we still continue to investigate based on Ms. Griswold's complaints. There was a previous person before Marion who lives behind Marion, who was so rude and angry and nasty and threatening that we had to call the police, so he could no longer call our office. And that was one of the reasons, and then Marion called. I never, and the health department never, did not follow up on all of her complaints. We did. We took them seriously, but there was nothing ever found during any inspection that would have been deemed harmful or toxic or anything. This is documented by, like I said, Dan Smith, myself, and the DEP who dropped the case. So I just wanted that clear, and there's a lot of documentation, like I said, at the health department, in Board of Health Minutes, and in the records themselves. Thank, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please.
If in fact, there was finding that there was some kind of health issue or possible threat, what enforcement or action might have been taken had that been the case?
If there was issues found, we would write an order to correct and say, Mr. Green, we need you to please put in these type of filters. Whenever I asked Mr. Green to do anything, he was always 100% compliant. He never gave me any resistance, anyone in my department, anyone on the board. He was always compliant and very willing to do anything that had to get done. None of his employees ever complained, which you would think if it was so bad in there, like if it was extending outside, you would imagine how the smell would be internally. No employees have ever complained to the health department about the odors. We've had other complaints from other businesses, for example, that called us and complained privately. I have not had one employee complain.
So there would be a specific set of criteria that you could.
Yes.
Would provide to the.
Absolutely. We would write an order to correct, and we would make sure that he follows that, and if not, there would be fines implemented and so on and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Okay, Attorney Morris, do you want to make a?
Excuse me, should I, should I read this letter here?
I was gonna close the hearing and then we'll read the, oh, okay, thank you. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. And thank you again for rescheduling this. You all, I know you're all busy, and you accommodated my schedule, and I appreciate that very much.
Did you have a nice time?
Yes, thank you. So again, I don't want to belabor the points. We did submit some, a color-coded street map. I believe you have that to show the substantial number of neighbors in support of the business, 90% plus, I'd say 95% plus. We also submitted a petition signed by about 63 neighbors of the business in support of the business. But again, I don't believe we needed to do any of those things. This is an appeal of a letter from a building inspector, and the sole issue in front of this board is whether or not my client is authorized to conduct manufacturing at this location. I, again, I don't even think this is a compliance issue. So even discussing the odor, I don't believe, it's fine to discuss it, but I don't believe it's appropriate for the agenda. The inspector would have to address compliance, or the Board of Health would address compliance. But if it were to, to be an odor issue, it's already been addressed. The Board of Health has addressed it, the DEP has addressed it. So the sole issue in front of the board, and, and for the board to vote on, is whether or not aromatic fillers is entitled to conduct manufacturing, which has been doing for 10 years at that location, based on the special permit that was, that was given to the prior business, and that is black letter law, which I'm, I'm happy to brief, but I think the board is probably aware that's black letter law. Unless the special permit itself says it does not run with the property, it runs with the property. So, and I understand some of the concerns, and especially the neighbor who said, well, you know, these special permits, they can't just run with the property, otherwise, you know, there's no enforcement, but there is. There's plenty of ways to enforce these things, again, on compliance. If the city inspector were called over there for whatever reason, whether it's odor or something else, that, that issue could be addressed, and it could be back in front of you, but right now, this, this sole issue is whether or not manufacturing is authorized at that location. It absolutely is.
All right, I have a question for you. So based on the fact that the use that was grandfathered was basically assembling wood stoves, and a special permit was allowed for manufacturing cutting tools, are you trying to say that at this point, any manufacturing use can now go in that property because of that special permit?
Yes. And, and, and that's, that's black letter. It absolutely can, unless it's not.
You have, you have a case, do you have a case in front of you that you could cite in that black letter law arena?
No, but I can brief it, Mr. Chairman. I mean, this is.
I mean, we, we, you know, we, we've been here, you know where we were headed in the last meeting, we're here today. I have seen nothing, I've seen nothing from you that indicates that we shouldn't adhere to the powers formula and test in this transaction. So I don't know what you could possibly show us, if you, I mean, if you think, if you think you have a case, I'm not saying that I want you to, I, I, I would wait to make a decision, but if it's really just you looking to try to make a case, I feel like we have, we have what we need. We have our attorney's opinion, and the powers case seems to be pretty clear about what we're supposed to do.
I guess, I guess basically I'm here then to make sure the records are clear for, for appeal. This is, this is not powers. Powers does not apply here. You and I went back and forth multiple times at the last meeting as to why, and you haven't given me any reason to believe that you're corrected.
Well, I'll tell you why.
You're, you're applying, you're applying law that, that, that doesn't apply here.
No, I, I, I think we're actually following, I think where we're, I mean, I don't know where we're gonna head up as a voting board, but I think the law that we're using is the proper basis. So we, we'll have to agree to disagree on that one. but I think the law that we're using is the proper basis. So we, we'll have to agree to disagree on that one. But if you had given me something, I think I would, it would have been more powerful than to tell me that at this point, you're going to brief something when we've waited for three weeks for this hearing. So, um, anyway. Um, is that it for your, uh, do you want your, is your, you want, you think your client has something to say to us as well? Or is this your speaking time for your client?
You could ask him.
Is there something you want to say to Mr. Green?
What I would say is, um, I disagree with some of the comments. Everybody has their opinions. Um, addressing the toxic stuff, there's nothing toxic and that has been proven out in.
Can I just interrupt you for a second? Let's make it clear that we're not here to talk about this like it's a special permit, uh, application. We're not here to talk about conditions of a special permit. We're here to talk about whether or not you need to apply for a special permit. Is there anything you can say to us that would add to that? We're not really, although people have talked to us like we're here for a special permit.
Yeah, so I'm probably mistaken.
I think we know better, uh, that, okay. If you have something to let me know how your manufacturing is, or your work is similar to what a tool cutting might be like.
Well, what I, so what I would say is the building was manufacturing before Heat Fab. If anybody pays attention to the infrastructure, it's got three phase power. You don't put three phase power in for, um, a warehouse for anything. It's.
Okay, but in 1989, when Heat Fab was in there, is it fair to say that what they did was assemble wood stoves? Do you know?
I don't know what they did, but it has three phase power and it was a giant machine shop. You can see still imprints where big machines were plugged into power. So there was heavy manufacturing being done there because it, it also had to go through a 201 process where thousands of dollars were spent on the property to make, to do remediation so that it would pass or be clean.
Was it found to be dirt, was it found to be dirty, do you know?
It had been found to be dirty, yes. So Heat Fab paid, um, money back when they, um, sold their business. And then we went through it again in 20 and there was more money paid to the state for testing and remediation. Some more soil was removed where there had been an underground oil tank.
Okay.
Um, so that piece, and so there was manufacturing there. And I, and my other, um, comment is that, um, we, as far as a special permit that was given to Hassy Savage that goes with that property, that we meet all of the conditions that are in that special permit. The thing that's not addressed there is odor. But other than that, we meet those special conditions. And this, and my thought on the odor piece is what, um, um, Ms. Hoffman spoke about, it's been addressed. And I don't know the right way to say it, but it's been through that process where these two different agencies looked at it. So that's, I should just finish though. I don't want to do what you were saying.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Marion?
Thank you, Marion Zerswell, 46 Hastings Street. Um, just a couple of comments responding to Ms. Hoffman. Um, um, it's very offensive to those of us who live in the neighborhood to have people say, well, I don't smell anything. Um, this is not just me, this is not about me. Uh, there are other people who have complained, there is an odor, we're not lying, we're not making it up, we have better things to do. And with regard to the DEP assessment, I don't, I don't know of any documentation. And I believe it was an opinion and not an actual finding based on actual measurements. Um, I, I do want to make it clear that I don't object to having a grandfathered building in a residential neighborhood. I'm asking only that Greenfield abide by its own regulations and limit the uses of that building on Haywood Street, the 38 Haywood Street, to the uses that were in place when the zoning regs were instituted. Nobody seems to be able to tell me exactly what those were, uh, when zoning went into effect. Um, and I know Mr. Green is trying to run a business, I respect that. Um, I appreciate the improvements he's made to the site. Our disagreement isn't personal or adversarial. I regret that Mr. Green has interpreted my actions in simply trying to determine where the odor was coming from as an escalation, as he puts it. I just want to be able to breathe fresh air and not to breathe in the chemicals that I would not bring into my home. Um, Mr. Green says he began candle manufacturing in 2015. Um, and he showed us, uh, his lease, a signed lease. But I don't see any documentation of the actual manufacturing beginning in 2015. Um, and I believe that the city erred in granting the special permit to Hassy Savage in 2014. Because that permit violated Greenfield's regulations in allowing an intensification of use in a grandfathered building. That of course means that the aromatic fillers is operating under a invalid permit. Um, note that there was no oversight or review by the city when Mr. Green took occupancy of the building. I'm asking just that the city abide by its own rules and prohibit the uses in a residential neighborhood that its zoning regulations specify as prohibited, which include wholesale trade and distribution, assembly, bottling, packaging, finishing plant in an enclosed building, open storage of raw materials, finished goods or equipment, light industry, manufacturing, processing plant. All of those things are prohibited, but they are taking place. Um, so.
So you're asking the board to say that these, that his use should not be allowed at all?
I believe, well, I, yes. I, 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 I think as I understand the regulations, in a grandfathered building in a residential neighborhood, the uses are to be limited to what was there when zoning went into effect. If I'm wrong about that, uh, I'm misreading the regulations.
Um, well, the, the laws, we understand it is that the grandfathering means that they would have to come to the, uh, Board of Appeals to ask for a special permit.
Right.
To change the use, which would trigger the right of the community to come in and tell us whether or not that use was, uh, it was substantially harmful to the neighborhood.
Right.
So I just want you to understand, this is, this, this far, I, I don't know, the, the opinion that we've been given to our councils. This is not a, he cannot use this business, uh, discussion. This discussion is whether or not Todd's business is allowed to, uh, is allowed under the umbrella of the existing special permit.
Okay.
Or whether he needs to come again for a special permit, which would open this up to everybody giving their opinions that they've given us, which really are not relevant to this piece.
Okay. Uh. Well, I would, I would just say then again, in the.
Just so you understand.
Thank you. In the language of the regulations, this building, this business, aromatic fillers, has been significantly, had a significantly more detrimental impact on the neighborhood than what was there before.
Yes.
Um, so, and as I understand the regulations, that's sort of the criteria, criterion for whether something is allowed or not.
Yep.
Is whether it's significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood, which this clearly is. And please, it is not just some cranky old lady complaining about an imaginary smell. And I really take offense at that implication, which is made from time to time. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Were, what you're saying is they're, they're worse than all the previous tenants or just the one prior to that taking over?
I'm sorry, what's the?
You were indicating, they're, they're worse than what was there before.
Right.
Is it the previous tenant that was there or all of the tenants that were there through history?
Well, I've only been there since 2014, so I can't speak to that. Some of the neighbors who've been here for many years, men on Hastings Street for many years, um, I think.
Is that true?
Absolutely, that's true. This is the radical change, what had always been going on, a very sleepy operation down there. It was predominantly warehouse, repeating myself, but it was not the manufacturing facilities we commonly understood.
And I, this was. When I bought the house in 2014, I was told by the seller that it was, um, there was a business in there that made, um, outdoor showers. I believe that's somebody, maybe Scott referred to that. Um, as far as I was concerned, there was nobody there. I mean, you'd see the odd truck maybe go in or out. Um, there was, but there were, there were no, now we have, in addition to the odor, we have semi trucks. Um, the outdoor lighting, which Mr. Green added, which was not there before. Um, and it just, it's a much more active business than all I can speak to is what was there in the fall of 2014.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes.
I just have a question. Aromatic fillers is in a residential, is all residential?
Yes, and the use that he has now is not allowed.
I thought it was residential, commercial.
Residential, it's RA.
Yeah, urban residential.
So none of that is allowed at all? Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment still?
Make it short, please.
You want to make them up there?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
My name is Harry Kenzel, live at 77 Lund Drive in Greenfield.
Yep.
Um, I'm a licensed electrician. I've been in the facility many times. My wife works there. And to Todd's testament of what Heat Fab did there, it's absolutely was a machine shop. I, Heat Fab is now called Durvent, and they're over in the industrial park in Turners, and I, I work there for them still. They had, you know, oils and gases and all sorts of things there for, they put together stovepipe, they built stovepipes, they didn't build stoves. It wasn't cold assembly. They, they had, uh, welding machines, cutting machines. So I just wanted to clarify that. And as far as the lighting on the building goes, that was made working again. That lighting was always there. Um, nothing was impadded, it was just made to function.
That happened through a grant from, um, like Matt Saber or EverSource.
But I just wanted to clarify that Heat Fab definitely wasn't just cold assembly, it was a huge manufacturing company there.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the here, I'm going to close the hearing at, uh, 7:11. Ready to deliberate or somebody want, you want, you want to take a break or you ready to deliberate?
Good, sure.
Yes, just to put everything, anything that you have that could be read into the record.
This is a letter from Bill Keck of 59 Haywood Street, Greenfield, Mass. The results of, the residents of Haywood Street, Hastings Street and Smith Street are paying a price as aromatic fillers continues producing candles that emit toxic pollution into the air we breathe. For some of us with asthma or COPD, the effects are immediate. And for others, the long-term health effects may be five to 10 years from now. Aromatic filters makes it difficult on many days for me to breathe outside my home. It makes it harder to shovel snow, prune bushes, water plants, wash my car or just enjoy my yard and my out, out, outside backyard. Many days I find it hard to socialize with my neighbors because toxic fumes exasperate my asthma. Yes, the quality of my life is affected by aromatic fillers. Springtime and fall time or fall season used to be my favorite times of the year to enjoy the outside air. Due to aromatic filters, that is no longer the case. Being an asthmatic, I take precautions not to visit candle shops or factories that make scented candles. The Americans with Disability Act protect, protects individuals with asthma. Asthma is considered an invisible disability. Looking at a person with asthma, it's not always evident a person has a breathing disability. There are days when I, when I leave home, leave my home in the scent of aromatic fillers triggers my asthma. It's like walking into a candle shop. Paraffin wax releases volatile organic compounds, VOCs, like acetone, benzene and tyuene. Synthetic fragrances contain phthalates, which can be, can be inhaled as absorbent and absorbed through skin. Other chemical burning candles can also release formaldehyde, acetylene and acrolyne. I find it interesting and alarming under climate risk on Google for properties on Haywood Street and Hastings Street, there are facilities near our properties that release toxic pollution into the air. This information is provided by Risk Factor, a product of Risk, of First Street, the leading provider for climate risk data. The city of Greenfield should be concerned for the health and safety of all of our citizens. Time is of the essence. As I said this early in the city of Greenfield, allowing aromatic fillers to produce its candles in a residential area should be, should never have been permitted. Bill, Bill Keck, 59 Haywood Street, Greenfield, Mass.
Thank you.
Because the piece that, there are a lot of things that he's saying there that are just not accurate. Federal government regulated out those items. There's no phthalates, there's no, blah, blah, blah. Braggers in the wax, that's all documented and the federal government doesn't allow it. It's, it's monitored by the Department of Reform. Those are the two government agencies that make sure they're compliant, that you don't, we don't get it because ours is still.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's the other point of that letter. Or thought, thinking about that letter, where he's taking broad brush strokes about how it ruins the neighborhood. That's why we had that survey done where it shows that do we negatively impact any, do we negatively impact you? And that's collected this thing.
Right.
So it helps.
But whether you negatively impact the neighborhood is the test, is the question asked by, for a special permit. The questions we're asking here are different, but I appreciate your, your related to that. Thank you. Um, okay, who wants to begin?
I, I look at these three indicators, whether the use reflects the nature and purpose of use prevailing when the zoning law of ordinance will affect. I take it that's, does this compare to what was there just prior, with, with the special permit that was granted before?
That's what, uh, that's what Gordon is saying to us, that we should look at the special, at the special permit and what that use was.
But we don't, we really can't.
We can't.
We can't do it.
Because we don't, they didn't, they never did anything.
Yeah, so, so what, I mean, if we're, we're trying to use this as a, a judgment, how do we satisfy that or respond to that question?
Gordon, should, can we go all the way back to the, to the original use, uh, and use that as a, as a measuring stick since they never went in there?
I suppose you could. The reason why I kind of portaled testimony I did is because I'm giving the six, the special permit. Their, their, their use is, is authorized by the special permit. I think it's conceded, it seems to be conceded that but for the special permit, there would be no authorization, right, for the business. And so that seems to be so warranted. So, um, that's why I, I mentioned about how that rationale, the powers case can be applied by lots kind of altering the free test little bit by looking at, you know, comparing what's contemplated under the special permit is authorized to the bid, to area of filter, uh, aromatic fillers. But clearly under the powers, you can still go back, you could still considerably go back to it. To the authorized use, can, to treat the authorized uses by the zoning laws having an effect. But I, 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 again, I think it's because aromatic fillers was citing special permit as its basis. And I think it's soul basis, being able to operate. It makes sense to look at what was contemplated by that special permit and then compare that use, that contemplated use with what's, with the regulations.
So do you have a thought or was that just?
Well, I, I, I'm trying to understand if, because, because there was nothing there, we can't compare it to that. But if, 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 if they were to have a special permits, would they be compared to Heat Fab? I mean, if we're going to go forward, if there's, for, for, for whatever reason, if they had to come back, what would we comparing the new special permit to relative to what was there before?
Yeah.
I mean, because it's, would it be Heat Fab? And, and I'm just, I mean, I look at these three criteria. If we're going to use those to say, okay, you've got to do it again, what would we do it against coming forward? Because, you know, it, it, a metal, a metal working shop or a foundry emits a lot of odors. Cutting oil, whatever fumes would be coming out of that from a welding. So if we're going to go forward, I would think this would certainly be less of a problem if that had been the previous use. Because we have nothing to compare it to now. So I'm, I'm trying to understand how to, how to apply this when there's nothing to compare it to.
Excuse me.
I, I think that's, that's what Attorney Morris is saying, is that you, we would find ourselves walking down a path that would be hard to, hard to, uh, like where would it go five special permits from now? Okay. But there's another road we could take, which is, did, I mean, do we think that aromatic fillers fits the criteria of the special permit that was granted? And if it didn't, then that permit expired. And then we would use. And then we would use, then we would compare aromatic filters back to the original uh the original, the original non-conforming use. Is that something that you think we could we could do?
No, no, that's possible, sure.
See, for me, I start at the public policy level, which is that non-conforming uses have to be narrowly construed. So at some point in time, there was a use going on there, nineteen eighty-nine. Let's assume it was manufacturing. Once they change the zoning and they forbade any of that to happen, then that that place is locked into something. So the question is, is that locked in specific to what it was doing, manufacturing wood stoves? And it doesn't matter whether the whether aromatic filters is better or worse. But is it just, you know, is that kind of use locked in so that anything else that comes along that wants to say that we want to, we want to ride the coattail of the non-conforming use? Is it, is it similar enough that it doesn't materially change the the neighborhood? Or is it enough of a change using these tests? And I would also like, Gordon referred us to, if we could open up the zoning book to eight point three F five, which talks about like when we give you special permits, we're looking for odors and we're looking for things like that. So is it, is it our policy now as a as a community following what I think is the spirit of this law to have these businesses that are trying to get into non-conforming properties, have those be narrowly construed? I mean, I don't know what the decision will be, but have to be narrowly construed so that they have to come back over and over again for a special permit so that the neighborhood could weigh in. We've heard a lot. We've we've, this hearing has been like a special permit hearing, and I'm not really interested yet in in that piece of it. I'm just interested in, from our point of view and from the building inspector and planners' point of view, how are they to look at these kinds of things? What duty do we owe our the the citizens and the businesses? I mean, again, I'm I'm not putting down this business at all. I I have no problem with the business being, I have no problem with this business. The question I have is, what is our job? And somebody points out that that they don't agree that this you should have gone in there just walking in the door and not come before a board to ask whether or not they need permission and then giving the neighborhood a chance to weigh in. There definitely is a difference between making candles, making tools, and making wood stoves, I believe. And that's the third test. Is it different in kind? So if we can't answer the first test because reasonable minds might differ or because of what you were alluding to, that they never went in there. Remember, the second one is the same thing. We, there's no degree we could compare to because nobody went in there. But is it different in kind? Which is the kind of test that could survive, you know, every special permit, you look back, is it different in kind? And if it is different in kind, then then the community, the neighbors have a right, I think, to come in and weigh in on what kind because if you look at the conditions here, just compare. So there is no condition about smell. And why is there no condition about smell? Because this is different in kind. Because the good board of appeals, which would have said, hey, there's an issue of smell if if there was something related to this this business, didn't, wasn't really thinking about that because smell wasn't an issue. A lot of it was around noise. So so it gives this board a chance, if they come back, to look at that factor of of at least that's a material factor in my mind. So that's the question I ask of us is, is that, do we see that as it, number one, do we see that as our role to make those those kinds of decisions? And secondly, are we giving a message to the planning and building department that we'd like them to dig a little deeper using the Powers test to see what things are going on so they could say to these businesses, you know, we think this this really requires you to go back before the board because you're changing this in a way that, you know, is a substantial change to the neighborhood. That's the balance. I that that's, you know, and it's a that that's it. That's it. And so if you read the section, you know, eight point three five, eight point three I, you know, all these things are part of what we do, right? When we when we issue a special permit, but if if this doesn't have a special permit hearing, none of that will be reviewed. And so the change that occurred and the impacts it's having, whether it's one person or a thousand people, means that, does that mean that we should have had an opportunity to hear it and give people a chance to weigh in? So now what do people think about? Yeah, please.
Yes, I think they should have had the chance. To me, this feels very different in kind. And I think it's not just about looking at the conditions of the special permit. It's about reading the meeting minutes when the permit was granted. And to your point, nothing came up about smell, and it just feels to me like common sense that if this had gone before the special permit process, somebody in that neighborhood would have said, what about smell? And the board would have started to factor that into the special permit. There's no way that wouldn't have happened. I just know it. I sat on the planning board. I've sat on this board when concerns are brought up within the public hearing on special permits, the special permit is crafted to help address those concerns. There's no doubt in my mind that if I lived in that neighborhood and a candle factory was coming in, my question would be, what about smell? For me, it's not about whether or not the smell is toxic or dilatorious to health. It's about whether or not it's annoying and unpleasant and kind of coming into my yard, coming into my home. And that's kind of enough to give me the right to say, what about smell? And I don't think people had that opportunity. So for me, again, yeah, there's nothing against the business, but I kind of question the process here. You know, and I would say too, in my experience, both on this board and on the planning board, that just that this kind of summary, well, manufacturing is manufacturing, doesn't feel sufficiently nuanced for this day and age to a point that was made earlier. If there was going to be marijuana processing happening there, people would have come and said, what about smell? And it would have been factored in.
Well, it requires a special permit for that reason.
Right. And so that's what I'm saying is it just feels to me like this is enough of a difference in kind, that no, it shouldn't just roll over. I think that we have this tendency to kind of to strive to be business friendly and just allow things to happen. I think that we have a tendency to not pay attention to borders on different zones and pay attention to the fact that what's happening on one side of the street in a particular zone is still happening on the other side of the street, even if that zone's a little bit different. Just feels to me like there's room for this city to start being a little more nuanced in this work. Um, and while I fully support the presence of the business, I also would support a special hearing or, you know, a special permit process that allows a local neighborhood to participate and shape those concern, to articulate those concerns and help shape what the special permit should look like.
Yeah, I I I have to agree with Mark. I mean, when we first got this and we went through this in the in the initial meeting, I personally was kind of shocked that they were allowed to just ride in under the same manufacturing permit. I think it is different enough. The nature of it is sufficient enough that I think more questions should have should have been asked and had they gone through the special permit, a lot more different questions would would be asked. But I also understand that, you know, they thought that they were doing the right things and, you know, I and I think I just feel that I lost track. I was thinking of something while Mark was talking, but
We'll come back.
I understand both sides, both sides, both sides of the equation. But this is different. I, if someone said to me, we're cutting tools, now we want to make candles, I would have said, and asked me, do you think we need to go for a special permit, a new special permit? I would have said yes.
Uh, interesting one in the conditions that Cassie was in there. They had to keep all the windows and doors and be completely closed during the manufacturing operation. So the smell wouldn't admit into the neighborhood.
Does it say smell in there?
All doors and windows should be, had to be closed, item number.
Right, but it doesn't talk.
It says smell, it just.
It just says.
Manufacturing.
Yeah, well, it could have also been for sound.
Yeah. Yeah, noise.
But I don't mean to be argumentative, but it doesn't say. That's it. Okay. So do you have a feeling about this one way or the other?
I think we have to sit down and start all of this.
I I know this is not a special permit. But so, okay, we're gonna we're gonna say they're indifferent in kind. And at some point, when they come back, we're going to need to condition this. Okay, I mean, I I'm trying to look forward is, okay, we come back and and listening to a lot of the input, the conditions will be pretty substantial. And, you know, if we're going to have differences in kind, then we need to have the thought process to say, okay, smells, noise, those are, a lot of cases, those are very subjective things. And certainly, the majority of the neighborhood says that's okay, but we do have a vocal minority. This is, we're not, this is not going to be acceptable at all cost. So I'm, and I'm not saying I'm I'm not, I'm agreeing with you. So I'm just trying to think, if we send it back, which probably is going to happen, you know, what's next?
You know, it's interesting because we're running into this more and more, you know, this is just coming from a different direction, right? This is an appeal of something that's kind of been hanging around. But we had the same issue with the marijuana. You know, even even in a special permit situation where it's clear there's a special permit, we're having we're having some difficulty balancing the business, you know, so I mean, I agree with you. I think this is a there's nuances here now that instead of just saying, you know, close the windows, you know, we may have to say other things and and we have to learn more about how to really condition these properties because general conditioning might not be fair to, you know, to the business and, you know. So so yes, you you raise a very, you raise an important point.
Because we need, if we're going to condition that, we have to condition it in a in a in a reasonable fashion to to make both parties
Right.
happy, you know. And and that that is 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 going to be a very meticulous thought process to accomplish that.
Yep.
And so because we, you know, we can't say to one party, you got to accept this at all cost, but we also can't say to the other party, you got to pay for this at all cost.
Understood.
Okay, so I'm I'm just trying to to just express.
Put it out, yeah, putting it out.
If we, if we send it back, we've got to be very, very cautious.
Be careful what we wish for, right?
Careful what we're asking for because it is, it will not, it will not be an easy process.
I I've thought of that long and hard, and I I I can't disagree with you. But I don't think at the end, I think the message that this hearing gives is a more, is a distinct message. That's a problem that the zoning board has anyway. I just want us to distinctly begin to message the uh, building inspector and the planner that there's got to be a little more, a little deeper dive, that manufacturing or selling or those kinds of verbs are not enough to
We we made an opening statement that we're not here to close any of them.
That's correct.
And then we're, but we also heard someone who wants it closed down at all cost. So, you know, we got to be, find a way to blend those together. And, you know, that's, that's going to be a very tedious process on our part. And I think we need to acknowledge that neither side can have what they want. We're not going to shut a business down, but we're not going to ignore what the business ought to do to fit in as a neighbor.
Well, I'd like, you know, I I'm sure Attorney Morris is contemplating whether to appeal our decision, but I I would like him to know and for you to know that this this board is not looking to, we're we're looking to, but we're looking to rules in our in our city that we feel we can function other. And we're not here to we're not here to take sides in this kind of dispute, except to the extent that we're supposed to. So you know, that's, okay, so it sounds like we're in agreement. Uh, Gordon, is there any way we should, so so it seems as though, just for the record, that in reviewing the three dots bullets that you gave us about how to compare what was to what is, that the one that we're relying on is the third one, which is that it's different in kind. And the use of the property, it has, it has an effect on the neighborhood that's material enough that we believe that this should have gone to a special permit because of that, because of those, that that law or that rule. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, so Gordon, what kind of a motion, should the motion just be a simple motion? Should it, should we, should we put some, should I put more on the record?
Oh, would the notion be, I mean, I'm just thinking, what you just extract a couple of people to send this motion to be handed back to me.
No, the
Just wondering what you're reaching.
The motion would be that the appellant that we would, we approve the appeal to the extent that, based on the Powers test and the the third, the 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 different in kind test under Powers, we believe that there's, that the aromatic filters is different enough in kind from either what was going to be there under the cutting tools or what was there under Heat Fab to warrant a application for a special permit. And then the question is how long of a period of time? I don't want to leave it open ended. It should, there should be some period of time. I mean, of course, you can appeal it, but if you don't appeal it, I'd like to give a period of time for that application to occur, which would also include site plan review. So ninety days, a hundred twenty days, what would be a fair period of time? Because if we agree with the appeal, then he's in there without a valid permit. And I, again, I don't want to disrupt his business, but there has to be some sort of a deadline, so.
Right, well, you get twenty days to appeal, right, once the decision signed.
Yes, that's one month.
There's twenty days right there. So what's a reasonable time after that? Period sixty days, ninety days? I want to give him, yeah. I agree. You want to give him enough time to do what they, you know, what they need to do, but.
Is there in in the administrative limitations or criteria that the city has to to operate without a permit? Yeah, the building inspector issues permit, I would say, I mean, we're saying you gotta, you're going to be operating without a permit. You got to come back. What is the administrative process?
Well, the administrative process would be to hold in abeyance and enforcement action for ninety days, give the applicant a chance to, or a hundred twenty days, or whatever the date period is. Hold it, hold it that in abeyance and and give the applicant a chance to apply for a special permit. Would that be, I think that would do it.
Yeah, but if they're going to come back with, they're going to come back with a special permit, is there yeah good to give them some guidance is, okay, if they're going to come back, what do they come back? I mean, again, we're just denying per the permit, we're going to say, don't do, you got to come back and correct us.
You have to apply for a special permit as though you were coming in fresh, brand new, or or what he does now and explain the the use and show the property and.
But I'm assuming they're going to come back with some kind of site plan review or some kind of documentation. I think, hopefully, they've heard from what's happened here.
How will, how will, how will do, what do it?
What they would need to do for us, for us to review it to be able to say, okay, this is acceptable, or we're going to condition it based on what they didn't tell us.
I guess, except, you know, for all other applicants, we really don't we really don't give, we don't really heads up our our appeals.
No, but I mean, we've, we've heard from, we've heard from the neighborhood that they feel there's a
Right. And we'll get it from them again, the healthy condition.
Hopefully, they're hearing that they're going to put in what other, whatever, whatever other mitigating equipment that was sought. That comes back to us based on what they heard. And we have that here based on that that permit with with their with their submission of documents saying, here's what we've done to ameliorate what they heard here as as a problem.
From a legal point of view, I'd be cautious about what we say here about what we would do at our, at our next.
I'm not, I'm just suggesting, you know, I'm just saying, if if we're going to go through this.
Yeah.
And they're going to submit a, yeah, the permit, you know. You know, having heard the permit coming for us, they now know.
Well, they've heard everything that we've heard.
Yeah.
And and they're going to have to do, there, it's up to them to then take care of the next steps.
That's right.
In regards to, they, they've heard our concerns, they've heard their neighbors' concerns, they have their own opinions on what they feel that they need to cover. And, you know, I think at this point, it's, the burden would be on them to either appeal or apply for the special form permit and and hopefully, and hopefully address all of those concerns that were, that were discussed.
And by the same token, people who have come to talk about the smell will understand that, you know, there are also people out there that are not upset about what's going on with this business and that we balance everything when we do our decision.
Yeah, we had a significant number of people who who who's either signed a, an affidavit or were told to say that they don't have an issue.
Hi. You set a time limit, thirty days, sixty days?
That's what we're discussing.
A clarifying question, though, in terms of time limit, are we talking about enough time to actually move through an entire special permit process? Or are we talking about a timeline to file?
Take application.
Permit. Take that once the application was on record, that that would then kind of
Go through our normal.
Grant that, that's the time, so that the business could continue unabated as long as within a certain timeline, the special permit application was in.
Which in and of itself is a ninety day. You know, we have ninety days to decide that and that. So it's, again, I I'm not trying, I'm not trying to harm the business, but I think we have to have, we can't have it open ended. So ninety, a hundred twenty, that's where my
I'm com- I'm comfortable in ninety or a hundred twenty.
I'm good, I'm good with ninety.
Ninety works.
Whatever it is.
Because then we, then we have our own processes that will add time to that. Because I also don't want to extend it out past, you know, an unreasonable time, because, you know, we do have some concerns in the neighborhood that need to. Yeah, I want to drag it out for everybody. Or anyone, I guess. Or anyone, I guess it's fair.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the appeal under the third prong of the powers test, which is different in kind. Based on the fact that the manufacturer of candles is different in kind, either tool cutting or assembling of wood stove parts. And that as a result, the applicant is there without proper permitting. But we also hold in this motion that any enforcement by the building inspector will be held in abeyance for ninety days from today to give the applicant a chance to appeal, which would be twenty days or file and make application to us for a special permit. Otherwise, after that ninety day period, the building inspector is free to enforce whatever action he takes because the business is there without proper permitting. Second, any discussion?
Right, hold on, hold on, I'm ready. I know Eric might ask me. Now, you made a comment about the whole, the thing inspector to hold off any enforcement.
In abeyance, any enforcement.
For ninety days. So he will understand that if they do an application within that ninety days that we're still holding off.
Mark's here, so.
Oh, sorry, Mark.
In fact, I was looking right at him. I was looking right at him when I made the motion. I know that he couldn't say, I didn't hear what you said.
I had to make sure that on day ninety one, you know, well.
It would be, I mean, it wouldn't be up to us, but at least in terms of the the orders.
We haven't heard it yet. I just want to make sure we weren't.
Please, again, nobody's trying to behoove everyone if if the business came to us and. So motion, there's a second, no further discussion.
So Dave made the motion, Dave's in, Mark, you seconded it.
I think Peter kind of. Whatever.
All right, so I want a a roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
David, yes.
But the record show it was unanimous. Okay, there's no correspondence now. Before we adjourn, Stephanie, Stephanie asked in an email to Gordon and myself whether or not she could see the confidential memo that was given to us by Gordon for her hearing. So like you got a confidential memo for this hearing, he gave us one for her hearing. I thought it was going to be put on this agenda, it's not, but just a heads up that that question will be placed on the next meeting agenda. All right, any other business? Can I hear a vote to adjourn? Peter, second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hey, thank you, everybody.